Buenas tardes a todos. Vamos al comienzo, a la segunda junta regular del Consejo Escolar de la Escuela de Oroscos, a las 5:30 y 4:00 p.m.
Ah, Marisol.
Presente.
Tengan todo.
Presente.
De charcar yo.
Presente.
My favorite, Marisol Dominguez. Diana Capistrano, she said she has a class, is she on remotely or no?
No, she's on.
Okay, that's right. Lavier Montenegro. Vanessa Herrera.
Presente.
Yes, yes, they don't. Oh, okay. Oh, I need to take it off.
Okay. Entonces... Tenemos coros. Vamos a votar por algún miembro que esté presente o que se presente arbitrariamente.
No, I don't think so.
I'm sorry, can I, I forgot, I want to make an amendment or whatever, we have a couple other members, so, that I wanted to roll call, but there weren't anything left. Adriana Calderón.
Presente.
Emanuele Cordubio Macía. Christina Aguirre Díaz. Got it, thank you. Hey, everyone's here, great, thank you guys.
All my first president?
I'm just making a statement in case I have the...
Solo, Adriana, que ya se enclasa.
What? Estoy con mis presentes a la fecha.
Este es el voto de la semana. Gracias, gracias por estar presente. Y sabemos que les Capistrano va a poder acompañarnos, por lo tanto, vamos al próximo punto. Revisión, es el voto y la aprobación de la agenda. Antes de aprobar quiero hacer una pequeña amendment, nada más under... Under "new business", añadir "other" en caso de que haya un miembro que tenga un "new business" a presentar. Son con esta corrección, una moción para aprobar la agenda.
Yo lo tengo.
Dos de favor, dos a favor.
Sí.
Alguien de acuerdo? Okay, la moción pasa con tres, 12 a favor.
Con la mayoría a favor.
La mayoría a favor?
Mm-hmm.
Voto para aprobar la minuta de la junta pasada.
Ama quiero hacer un comentario acerca de eso, no sé si es necesario traducirlo en español, siempre lo hemos hecho. Él sigue diciendo no sé si es necesario.
No es obligación, se puede hacer, pero ahorita vamos a poner la que ya está en inglés. Si se hace la traducción, cuando se haga la traducción, va a ser una traducción... A ver, acá. Todos a favor?
No, en la segunda.
Vamos. Ya antes.
Okay.
Segunda por suscriben.
Sí.
Todos a favor?
Sí, sí.
Alguien se opone? La moción pasa con dos a favor, solo no se lo excede. Okay, tenemos un invitado especial, Mr. Alderman Starinsky, que viene a hacernos una...
Gracias.
Van a ir a dos.
Sí. Acá también. Andalasco y Mayen. Obviamente, Leo, good afternoon, thanks very much for allowing a few minutes, I know that we had the first three weeks in school, I've been very grateful, as an electric official, as a father, so I can attest that the wonderful work that you do here in Oroscos to keep our place and our family safe, so, as you know, with everything that's going on with the, right now with the federal government, we want to make sure that we can collaborate, and all that, this school sometimes have sanctuary teams, and also, we want to make sure that we cooperate and collaborate in any way we can, you know, to disseminate information for our families, so in any way that our office, as a city, you know, the mayor of Chicago, as a former teacher, has a special commitment to make sure our schools are safe grounds, when there's a lot of fear, so what I just, you know, again, as a father as well, but also as an electric official, want to make sure that we are in regular conversations, as you know, there was also a shooting this other weekend here at the farm, so we've been talking to neighbors, and, you know, there's an investigation pending, there's a, you know, we do have a lot of, I know that there's been a lot of speculation around what happened there, it was an unhoused neighbor, we know in the community, a victim was murdered there, and we have, we have a lot of good clues about what actually transpired there, and so we have a video property observation, so the police department has a special attention there, so we, we are, we already contacted the owner of this property, apparently he lives in Florida, so they will be having to come back here, which was some of the issues that we have about that particular site, the parties, a lot of stuff going on there, and we talked to the neighbors, we have a lot of information, and the law department and the commander are working on that, so they'll be talking directly to the owner on Monday, so this is, you know, we have all the attention in this area, given what happened at the end of the school year last year, they don't want to create any kind of narratives and make these any kind of grounds for any kind of raids or anything like that, so we want to make sure that this is a safe return to school, that we continue operating with the sacredcy of our spaces, the schools are safe grounds for families, so this I mean, you know, a lot of the kids, this is what they have as a safe space, so we do everything we can, so I did want to share that, because we do, we're working on that investigation, I feel confident that we will be able to get to the root of all that, because it was really tragic what happened, as we do that, I know, you know, communication and anything that continues to happen, and now I'm in touch with many of you, so I just reassure my commitment, you know, we live a few blocks away, and also, it's a special space for the community, for many reasons, so after-school program, I know that we talked about that as well, so we're working on how we can, we can work to make sure that we can fund raise, I think about $30,000 is what we talked about, so we're glad that we have here, you know, members of the community that also can work with us, so we, we're committed to work with after-school programming, any budgetary need, and making sure that they're always safe, you know, so we, I want to just thank you when I come here, I will have to leave in a few minutes, but I want to make sure that you know that we are here, that we have your mind. If you have any questions.
And then is there supposed to be a Network 7 LSC meeting with the Dr. McEnking, is that what you know, is that the wrong one?
No, it's the right line, so, the Alderman and myself and Ms. W met two weeks ago, I believe it was, and he has offered to get several LSCs in touch or scheduled meeting with the CEO, Dr. McEnking, and so we are working on trying to coordinate with other LSCs to see if, not getting more, though, if you get in, at least, you know, it would be power numbers, as some of the schools in our areas, I mean, I know we're a little different than the neighborhood schools, given that we're citywide, but just as a CPS school, we have some of the same budget constraints, we have the same needs, we're still in the same areas, so we have all that, so that we can expose some of those things to that person. Do you have any other specific questions?
I'll, I'll say your name as well. We already, we already sent that, we're intent.
And just considering everyone's background, you know that most of us prefer to pray, specifically, or, just any thoughts?
Yeah, yeah, they have a preference of time, that's what we're reaching out to the LSCs, so if you have a preferred time, you can just let me know. Yeah, well, definitely, we want more participation, because we want to see the better class.
It'll be all on Network 7, right?
Yeah, it will be Network 7.
Our last item on the agenda is principal updates.
The prior data is the CIIPP, that is the instruction. Los maestros recibieron desarrollo profesional sobre la planificación educativa bilingüe para estudiantes dotados, así como sobre la enseñanza con criterios de éxito durante el desarrollo profesional de inicio de año. También recibieron sesiones sobre cómo integrar el arte en las facciones principales de sus clases y cómo acelerar la instrucción para estudiantes dotados alineando la con su nivel inicial de año. Studentship of learning, maestros recibieron capacitación sobre cómo crear y usar los criterios de éxito con los estudiantes, esto les ayudará a mejorar su aprendizaje en cada sesión. Los miembros del equipo de desarrollo educativo, quienes salieron, también visitaron las aulas para evaluar el desempeño de los maestros con los criterios de éxito. Próximos pasos, ELT revisara estos datos y elaborara medidas adicionales de apoyo y rendición de cuentas para los maestros y prácticas restaurativas. Los maestros recibieron capacitación sobre el protocolo de comportamiento de Oroscos para saber cuándo y cómo abordar problemas de comportamiento en el aula, así como cuándo y cómo solicitar asistencia administrativa. Todo el personal también recibió una revisión sobre cómo usar la disciplina consciente para apoyar la autorregulación estudiantil y crear extractoras que fomenten un comportamiento positivo. Y actualizaciones de la directora, el personal desató tiempo durante el desarrollo profesional de inicio de año a establecer vínculos con la misión y visión de Oroscos. Todos los maestros del aula se reunieron con la directora para compartir las fortalezas y necesidades de sus estudiantes y cómo apoyaron a todos para que Oroscos alcance su meta del Plan de Trabajo de Mejora Continua de que el, oh man, my brain number is a bit bad. Gracias, de los estudiantes alcanzan el crecimiento equivalente a un año o más. Te colaboró con el departamento de instalaciones de CPS para garantizar que la construcción de Oroscos estuviera completa, like, el mejor, antes de la llegada, llegada de los estudiantes y que las amparras que debían instalarse después del inicio de clases se dejaran de forma segura y eficiente mientras esperábamos ya llegada de las piezas. And those have not been installed yet, but we're super impressed. La administración proporcionó datos de fin de año a todos los maestros para su uso en la planificación educativa, por ejemplo, el maestro de primero grado recibió datos de kinder, el de segundo grado recibió datos de primero grado, etc. La directora fue reconocida por el Laboratorio de Enseñanza y Aprendizaje Social Nacional de la Universidad de Illinois en Chicago por su contribución a la reducción de suspensiones y el aumento de la seguridad en la escuela secundaria lícia durante su periodo como su director. Su entrevista formaba parte de un nuevo estudio que están realizando sobre los efectos de las IAS de Illinois en las tasas de suspensión estudiantil. Se realizaron breves observaciones en todas las aulas y se rindió reto a la administración, al profesorador, para garantizar que todos recibieran el apoyo individualizado necesario para prender el mejor apoyo a los estudiantes. Prácticamente, se instalaron ciclos de coaching para el profesorado que lo solicite o demuestre una necesidad. Se apoyo la directora, al director residente de Santiago en el desarrollo de programas extra escolares, tanto gratuitos a través del programa deportivo de CPS como de pago a través de socios comunautarios, para garantizar que los estudiantes de Oroscos sigan teniendo actividades extras escolares interesantes a pesar de las limitaciones presupuestarias de CPS. El programa comienza el 8 de septiembre, consulte Penter Press para más detalles. Y se colaboró con amigos de Oroscos para el recurso de Parents Per, la aplicación de comunicación con padres para agilizar la comunicación. Gracias a Fu por financiar esta útil herramienta de comunicación. ¿Preguntas?
Friends, I'm ready. ¿A cuándo vamos a empezar mis offers?
Yeah, I'm actually, me, Michelle, and Lucy are all signed up, and we're working on uploading parents now, so I'll be the next up.
So, we should. Okay. I'm going out to put them down. Okay.
I'm sorry, one more taken. Just kind of going off of what the other ones were talking about, just want to be clear, CPS has sent out some things, but Oroscos obviously works very hard to ensure a safe, happy, and healthy learning environment for all, so we reviewed the current CPS processes on September 15th. Sorry, that should be the August 15th School Leaders webinar, and, you know, schools do not ask families for immigration status, do not coordinate with federal representatives, including ICE, don't shift student records with ICE or any other federal representatives, except in the rare case where there might be a court order, we don't allow ICE agents or any federal representatives to access CPS schools unless there's a criminal judicial one, which happens. And then, just also wanted everyone to know that I'm on a WhatsApp chat with the Pilsen Rapid Response Team, as well as a text thread with the Pilsen Defense and Access Team, so they keep me updated, and then I work with CPS to inform families of credible reports.
Have a question. There's a credible report, how quickly would it be?
So...
How quickly would that, would you be tomorrow?
It depends on the situation, so there isn't really like a set response to that, if it's an emergency, communications will work with me immediately, if there's another emergency elsewhere, it's not a priority, then obviously.
And so to be clear, you need to have clearance from CPS to send that in communication?
And since we don't have parents going yet, how would you communicate that information? I've been just given, thinking about the upcoming weeks, and I know that ICE agents were at the courthouse today, at the D.B. courthouse, and so I feel like it's going to, like, just escalate within the next few days, and thinking about possibilities that are going to occur because of next, I'm understanding, so, yeah, how would you communicate to, you know?
Yep, so right now, the mechanism I do have is the Yet Another Mail Merge, so I can shoot everyone emails, and then of course, letting the parents of, like, Fu, back in pack, those central parents know, so they can use their communication channels as well.
I have a question.
Yeah.
How, how would you support students in briefing, is, I just want to come here either during, like, pick-up type or drop-offs? I'm just thinking a lot of the middle time, but, um, I'm just a question.
Yeah, so the CPS Crisis Manual actually talks about keeping things as normal as possible for little student, younger students, so we would do that within classrooms, usually CPS gets all the resources out to us, but, you know, worst-case scenario, just saying, like, you know, how are you feeling today, just having a talking circle where it's like, how are you feeling today, you know, why are you feeling that way, what do you need for support, and then making sure that Ms. Kane and social worker Lopez are available for those check-ins, and that teachers just chat them on the students who might need that. Good questions.
In addition to what CPS is offering in auto-communication and so forth, the Alderman also has a rapid response team that will reach out to his constituents, which are the ones that are here, right, and so that will also unite another layer of bodies present to hopefully deter some of those agents, as they did at last year's school.
My wondering is, is like, you know, it's a very smart, I mean, it's a whole other language, and maybe some kids will overhear some of the language, that it means that there's, you know, like, the last year's school, like, there's sort of words that are being used, and some, you know, students can pick up on that, and so, I mean, I think where I was going with the question of how we should support the free training, I think, because there are standards for quality, but just in general, deep reading of students, because they may have apprehensive, not very good for language that would be used, when you were trying to support for any of the parents, because it was a surprise of something.
And we did have some students last year that did share some, you know, anxiety or other feelings, and so we just made sure we got them to counsel Kane and the social workers, so they got this. Say hello.
Any other questions?
Okay. Siguiendo al próximo punto, asuntos viejos, vamos a tomar el caso de asuntos clínicas.
Un to, on the, yes.
Right. Oh, la junta es el viernes, okay, sorry. La discusión, la plataforma de comunicación para padres, para colgarles, esta hora van a tener que ir square. El onboarding process puede tomar hasta un mes. Estamos trabajando, están, están trabajando, administration con, para utilizar lo más posible, pero en cuanto tengan todo setup, se van a notificar.
Tenía una pregunta acerca de los asuntos de la clínica, me parece que nuestro primer habían preguntado si la clínica se usaba, si la comunidad usaba la clínica y qué eran las frecuencias, si pudieron investigar resultados.
Yeah.
No va a ser la clínica.
So CPS actually spoke with them to get that information, but I'm not pretty good at it. Yeah, because it's, you know, I haven't talked to them directly, but it did sound like it's out to CPS, that they might have said some things to CPS that are contrary to what I know as, like, they're supporting our students with mental health, so I had to talk to them, I think they said.
El próximo punto es la discusión sobre el comité de la nación de la reforma. Comencé mucho la vez taxada, me comuniqué con mis herreas, y efectivamente, si el ALC y Juvenis se deciden usar, tendría acceso a todas las previas, por los previos tres evaluaciones. Ah, ahorita la pregunta sería, si queremos proceder con un comité, o es algo que el ALC va a hacer, de cuál, y si decidimos por comité, saber cómo se va a llevar a cabo ese comité, cuáles son las expectativas, y lo que se está diciendo, lo que se espera del comité. También, en esto, les mandó con el mejor recordándoles que, porque por supuesto que todo vamos a haber pasado aunque fuera tarde, tenemos la oportunidad de añadir un, una check fuera de lo que ya tiene CPS, la fecha límite para eso es el primer noviembre, y eso es algo que se tienen que acordar entre ALC y la directora. So, parece que hubo preguntas el año pasado sobre si todo eso puede hacer, so, me dio la impresión de que alguien tiene algo en mente para añadir.
That's all I have, okay, it was answered.
Um, I'm going to be honest, at this point, I don't really understand the way we do evaluation here, because it doesn't seem to be rooted in data, like, I reduced misconducts by 30%, but I got a basic, so, like, I'm just struggling with how we're doing it overall in relation to the evidence, and anything that can just make that a little bit clearer.
So the question right now is, is there additional points that we want to include as part of the evaluation, because last year, within LSC, within the committee at LSC, the question was asked, can we still do it, and it was after on refered square, you actually wish out to Ms. W to find out if it was possible, so that's what gave me the impression that somebody wanted to add additional metrics, so this is the opportunity to say what those wishes were.
I don't know what those wishes are, but I think one thing we should consider, I know there were members here on the principal evaluation committee, I just thought, as I know you've spoken, you know, just in general, and there was discussions, do we still want to have this committee next year, right, because it, some people felt like LSC just had the final stage, so, so I think that's one thing we should just think about as we're talking about this. As far as other metrics, I don't have a good answer, the solo, when you've spoken to the principals, do you have any ideas, like, obviously, we want this to be as far as possible, I know you're saying you want it rooted in data, is there a fair evaluation, obviously, like, can you give us some ideas, because I don't, just other metrics, I'm not sure off the top of my head.
Other metrics, not so much, but, you know, if we get over 100 people filling out the evaluation, that's like a pretty good chunk of people, so I think the survey, the evaluation survey, you know, should definitely be taken into account, that we do need to root in data, it's like, wow, we've grown over, you know, 20% since I got here, we've reduced our ICTs, like, of course, there's still going to be concerns, there's always areas of growth, like, 100%, but if the overall evidence is trending, like, the majority is this, then I want that to be taken into account, so, just anything that we, if there are concerns with safety, you know, thinking about what we might want to include in this to really, like, flush that out, would be helpful for me.
I think going back to the metrics, some homework that we can do as an LSC, tarea que podemos hacer como consejos escolares, de repasar las categorías que actualmente están en la evaluación, y estar preparados para la próxima junta los primeros de octubre, para discutirse, las vamos a agregar, verdad, porque a lo mejor todos necesitamos un refresher, yo sí, de cuáles son esas categorías.
Entonces, puesto que la fecha límite es el primer noviembre, podemos ponerlos como fecha límite de tenerlo para poder discutirlo en la próxima junta, al ALC, para no tener que hacer las tasas líquidas. La...
Quieren hablar del comité?
Sí, la opción de tener el comité, esto es algo que podríamos decidir ahora, o lo dejamos también, porque... It's, the evaluation in total, in its entirety, is to a hundred and fifty days before, you know.
My last day of my contract is June 30th.
Right. So we can't ever remember if it's two, if it's February 1st or February, yeah.
So wait, so when would the deadline for the evaluation be?
A hundred and fifty days prior to.
Got it, okay.
So. Oh, yeah.
January 31st.
Okay, so January 31st would be the deadline to submit the evaluation and to um decide whether we are renewing contract for that.
That is super much sooner than anyone else. Normally, we have the evaluations for the first of May to put everything in the system, the first, the last of May, right? So that is, this is, we're putting the deadline five months ahead.
I think it would be a lot easier to do this.
Well, no, I'm going to start to plan. Is there anyone who has a strong perspective, if they want the committee or not? Or preference, if they want to explore us? Or they want to go to the school, yes or no?
I can talk a little bit about the masters that were present in the committees to see if they're still interested and if they expressed that, um, it was a lot of work organizing it all. So, the truth, talking about the masters, of part of the masters, I don't think they're interested. There won't be a group of masters interested in, um, staying in the committee. And again, that was just nothing more, talking about those that have participated in the session. No, both.
So normally, we're going to send the paper to the committee to, uh, to have the survey and collect those data to present those data to the council of schools. So, thinking about what methods we're going to take to, if it's a survey, if it's a town hall, right? Those types of, um, those types of actions are going to have to be realized by ourselves. And the majority of the time, the parents that are in the school are also present. They're present in the committee. There are few that aren't, right? The majority that are in the school are also present. So, my opinion is not a principal.
If we don't have a committee, we have something, a place for the parents and masters to still play or, I don't know, write that some perspective, so, or, so, or, so, or, so, or, so, or, so. Okay. Because I say, if there's no committee, or, say, if they don't have access to that information and we're also a little bit of other perspective that doesn't exist, well, I don't know, that would be hard.
No, it's impossible, yeah. Our job is always be inclusive, right? So, yeah.
I think it would be exciting to have an input of the experts to be able to obtain more of the input from the parents. And just thinking about how the dates of November, the dates of November, uh, the backup. Uh, for me, it's a very common destination to support the parents, promote, uh, the evaluation, uh, recordatorials, explain the importance of what, um, of the interview and how it would be a opportunity for the parents to, to share their experiences.
I don't know why.
Just because of the way they have the orders and.
Yeah. Because the last year's school, so. Until the best October.
You're saying that we have to have the evaluation followed by the date of the activity.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I don't.
It's okay.
Oh, okay.
Unless there's a problem, but if we change, like, if it changes, uh, a lot, it's impossible to compare. So, my perspective is the following. Given that we've been in the committee for the last two years and before that, there was no committee, the committee had the opportunity to see each other more in detail than what we did in LSC. So, from that perspective, I think that if we talk more in detail, here, we did, the LSC this year, same as the past year, we did it in many hours. When the committee, we did it in two, three hours for many weekends. So, if, if we had the opportunity to get deeper, it was, it was like breaking down these obstacles. However, given that this year, basically, including the last three years that we already did, plus what we did last year, which is almost nothing, right? Like, it's just two months, just, um, taking the information that already was obtained and the new, um, I think that the LSC could do that, but it wouldn't be possible in a regular LSC meeting. Because, for sure, we have two meetings, two hours, or a half hour. So, that would have to be done through a meeting, because it's a Saturday. So, to also, uh, to take into account the parents that, that, uh, accompany them in the regular LSC meetings, um, so it would be a meeting solely for the evaluation. Um, apart from that, the , again, in my opinion, the survey didn't go very efficiently. Um, the year before, it worked a little better because we changed a little bit the way that the questions were structured and it's changed the direction. For the same reason that we're talking about the parents that don't have the same day-to-day that CPS does, right? The way that it's structured, sometimes, it's not a day-to-day language conversation. So, it worked a little better, but we also saw that, um, there were very few comments. So, it was just checking it off, right? We saw, for example, the days that were done in the per car pickup, they started with comments and then for the fourth question, they didn't put comments. So, it's not something that can be done in a table, like, if you do it, you'll take it and analyze it and you'll think about all the last four years, not just these years, not just one year. It will take the parents a little bit to try to accomplish. So, I think that we already have surveys for three years, put those and change the format for this year, maybe a town hall, uh, an open conversation, an invitation to the parents, like, hey, tell them what we want to say, so the principal doesn't exist. What, what do you have, what are your opinions in this specific, based on the teachers that are in this specific, are you in agreement, why yes, why no?
I'm super in agreement with this point. I think that when you bring the people together, you figure each other's role, right? So, one, parents might not be comfortable speaking, even though we say, here, the director, right? But I'm seeing who's talking. I don't say any disclosure agreement, I don't say it to my mom, what she said, you know, right? And just going back to inclusivity, right? I want to give the people the privacy so that they can put their comments in. If the most anonymous way to do that, you might want to do is through an anonymous survey.
I think it works as a solid solution, so that it's neutral. It would have to be a mutual, um, but also, with the privacy, uh, it gives a sense of, a sense that it would be for anyone to be around it. It's a, I think, um, I think the town hall does figure. I just think about other meetings, where there was a parent meeting, um, it involved two or three, and it just, if people weren't being talking, I don't think that it would be a fair way to, um, to go into evaluation.
I think that, should we have a town hall? Yes. How many people does it take to talk and share?
Well, in my experience, it depends on the type of, uh, town hall, right? Because there are options where everyone has to register before, has to mark, add their questions before we start. And then, because it will be three people who have almost the same question, it's the work of one person to accept all of that and do it. There are various parents that believe in this. You can give us a response to that question. Uh, so, there are ways to do it, but because we don't have enough time to do it, we have to have a plan for the next year or two years right now, of today, in place of trying to do it in four weeks. Because one has to train, uh, has to, uh, pay attention to every person, even if they speak English, speak Spanish, use their phone, their social media, uh, the social media, or, or the rest, so that everyone knows that they have the opportunity to use their voice.
But I'm in agreement that we have to do, if we're going to use the interview, you know, better job of assuring the people, um, to understand, like, the severity of the survey, right? And that, um, their voice is important and to realize that the way that it is, because I've heard of parents that, ah, I call the interview, but they can do whatever they want, right? And we have to change that way of trying to make them feel that, well, the reality is that we don't do what we think we do. We're based on the data, right? So, there is work that we can do in that aspect to encourage more parents to do this.
I think part of that would be to take the decision of if to take the interviews into account that, it seems that the year before, I don't remember, but the survey, when I did, they presented to find out. They did. And because they don't control it, they would do surveys, but it's, um, they did it finally, thirty percent. So, if we communicate to the parents when they only did thirty percent of what they have shared about it from the survey, I'm concerned. So, it has to be transparent, right, from the beginning of it. We're going to take the service, we're going to count, we're going to count this percentage. Say very carefully to the service.
And the year before, we changed the language of the interviews to make the parents, um, could have, uh, have more information about the differences that, uh, that remains. Uh, and, well, we did short explanations, so we took a little time doing those changes to make the interviews more, um, when it was a user problem.
When it is a user problem. Uh, so. Porque yo creo, yo pienso que usar más encuestas si tienen ese beneficio privado y sigue mucho de ese trabajo. Ya, ya está dentro, ya está simplificado y hasta probado por, uh, digo. Entonces la decisión sería de no tener un cambio y que algo así lo haga. Estamos de acuerdo? Given the sort of time that you have.
Vamos a votar. Si, pero antes que empezamos a votar, uh, tenemos que tomar una decisión que si queremos arriesgar. Tener más cosas como, uh, más gente participando, un town hall. Tenemos que empezar ese trabajo después de este año. So, tiene que ser parte de nuestra próxima, el, la primera junta después. Que se entregue al, al survey, ¿verdad? Aquí ya sabemos que tenemos que empezar a poner el trabajo y, uh, ayudar a todos los padres. So, I, I like the idea. But in order to make it happen, you gotta start planning right after the last one. And then you have plenty of time and it should be, you know, just like you have a back or pack of eight. Five minutes, here's thoughts on this, next meeting another five minutes and so on. So that we do it in small pieces instead of waiting at the last minute with pressure. No sabemos qué pieza, you know, cuál o maría porque no está aquí este día. This gives people ample time to put in their feedback and participate.
Ah, el dato que queríamos agregar en, uh, el año pasado era. Student growth, tira. Que no era parte de, uh, la logación.
Y era porque, uh, C P S no proveído esa información. Sin cual, sin más.
Uh, no es parte de las. Suricuas.
No, pero es porque eso es, eso es algo que normalmente C P S. Thank you how, había dos componentes en, en la, lo que decía algo así. Yo, el student growth que, uh, mandaba C P S, pero C P S no mandado pues más que de five years.
But can you base that off of what I already?
Well, that's what I'm saying, so that's what, that's what we could decide to do now.
Yeah, and I have the idea from the whole time I've been here and collected.
Because it's normally something that in the past, at least in the training by outside. It used to be provided to, it used to be incorporated in there. It's something they would do, they would qualify it and it would be part of the evaluation process, the, the entire evaluation.
Without us having to.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But they don't do that, they haven't done that in the last five years.
So, those causes on student growth, on district assessments, student achievement, state tests. Attendance records, progress force graduation, primary college and career credentials, that's for instance. Uh, so progress force graduation, attendance records, student achievement, state tests, student growth, on district assessments. So, get everybody.
And those are things that we're gonna come back for next week to decide. But right now, um, I guess do we vote on committee or no committee, just so that we give. Because if there's a committee, like she said, we have to start the process for the committee so we can get the committee members. So, um. I guess those in favor against the committee? I.
I don't think that you want to make a motion to create a committee.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you want to, Ms. I'm Ms. Torres, do you wanna?
But I don't think it's an official, it's not a motion, it's just an agreement.
Oh. Oh. Oh, okay.
Because it's not a motion, unless we were to vote in a committee, that's a motion. But right now, is it, are we in agreement that we're not gonna?
So, could we, a motion to create, motion to create the thing, I'm just thinking.
Motion to create the committee.
No, she's saying it doesn't have to be a motion.
Yeah, that's like. But, okay, from what I understand, nobody wants a committee, we're gonna eliminate the committee.
Correct.
So, are we in agreement that we are not having a committee? It's not a vote, it's a, a word agreement. So, we don't have to vote for the committee because we're not having a committee.
We are the, and we are the ones.
Yes.
We are the actual council.
I understand.
So, is anyone opposed to that?
I'm abstaining for obvious reasons.
You know, you have. So, we're in agreement that we're not having a committee.
Correct.
So, all in favor, right?
All in favor of not having a committee.
Not having a consensus, or is it for consensus, not necessarily a vote.
Consensus, yes, yes. Right.
Okay, okay. Yeah.
So, we agree no committee. Okay, is, does anybody want a committee here, because?
No.
Okay, good, so it's agreed that we will not have a principal vice committee. And the charge goes on to the L S C to prepare and. Distribute whatever, whatever means are necessary to complete the project. Uh, anything else on your old business that you had missed? Uh, asuntos nuevos, is that after school programming?
Um, Mr. De Santiago, can you come off mic and share a little bit about after school programming?
Yes, happy to. Am, am I coming in loud and clear?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, all right. Buenas noches todos, ¿cómo están?
Buenas noches.
¿Se escucha?
Si, se escucha, se escucha, bueno, uh, para empezar, uh. Estoy tratando de trabajar con las organizaciones, organizaciones de la comunidad para ver qué pueden ofrecer. A, a los estudiantes, ahorita no tenemos el presupuesto de, de lo que es O S T, our school time budget, um. No soy adivino, pero si tenía que adivinar, uh, no creo que nos van a llegar mucho dinero, entonces tenemos que ser creativo este año. Uh, por eso vamos a empezar, uh, con, con programación que, uh, hago. Con, eh, hoy tuvimos junta de P C C Arts, P triple C Arts, uh, que va a dar el mariachi, baile folkórico y las artes. Entonces ellos ahorita están inscribiendo estudiantes, uh. Esos van, algunos programas van a coler el lunes, viernes, otros el, el martes y el jueves. Uh, también si vieron en, en el boletín, eh, introducimos, uh, vamos a traer el yoga de nuevo. En el pasado, el, el dinero de, que nos llegaba de after school programming, pagaba por ese, ese programa. Ahora va a ser de pagarle directo a la maestra. Um, otros programas que, disculpen, que tal vez, uh, tengamos al alcance para, uh. Estoy tratando de enfocar, enfocarme en el kinder a segundo. Uh, es la, la liga del parque que proporciona el béisbol. Uh, es posible que nos van a poder hacer algún programa de lunes, miércoles o martes, jueves. Donde están haciendo, uh, chibo con los niños chiquitos. Uh, entonces de eso estoy trabajando ahorita, cada viernes que tengo alguna actualización, lo voy a poner en, eh, en el boletín. Uh, y creo, creo que este año los programas no van a empezar todos al mismo tiempo. Uh, todo depende de, de la programación que pueda entrar. Uh, para terminar, si nos llega el dinero, uh, en ese caso vamos a hacer un ajuste. Y, y poder hacer la programación que hemos hecho en, en el pasado con los maestros que están disponibles en la escuela. Uh, finalmente, uh. El after school scores, uh, the C P S scores, que es el programa de, uh, de fútbol, de voleibol, de, de deportes. Uh, ese lo vamos a empezar ya la semana que viene. Mañana vamos a mandar, eh, comunicación a los padres de los niños que se registraron para darles el, eh, las horarios de práctica. Uh, estoy muy emocionado de ese programa porque me encantan los deportes y me conocen a mí. Uh, los que me conocen, mis niños están en el béisbol, yo jugué béisbol toda mi vida hasta unos, hasta los cuarenta años para que, para que vean. Uh, pero me iba a dejar las poses y no lo dejaba, entonces tuve que dejar el béisbol para, para seguir contento en la familia. Pero como sea, quiero proporcionarle eso a la comunidad, uh, y creo que, que ya con el, cuando nos llegue el, el. Con, con el presupuesto que nos llegue, con C P S scores y con, uh, el enlace con Tulsa Athletic League. Vamos a poder dar algunas cosas a, a la comunidad. ¿Algunas preguntas?
Solamente un comentario, no pedimos que Mr. De Santiago puede hablar acerca de, porque su nombre está, no está en el agenda, entonces teníamos que. So, que tenemos que estar en contas como quieran, C P S. Just to be honest in case, because historically we've had similar situations. So, I didn't even a report, but we did have to.
And then today I was told he's actually, he should start taking over the principal report. So, if we need to like vote on that or something, but that is an expectation of C P S. Is that like this quarter he gets a domain, then next quarter comes in two domains. By the end of the year, he's like well versed in how to provide that to the people.
Yeah, and that's what we all have to be in perspective.
Sure that we're clear.
But maybe add, add them to the participant.
Yeah, so if it's not through public participation and it's on behalf of Missable because he's like shadowing, if you will.
Yeah.
Um, it just has to be.
Right, explicitly on the agenda.
It has to be explicit. Okay, again, that's just the FOIA. Responsibility, oh, my responsibility.
I do have a question, um, so I know P C C C, P C C C Arts. Um, it's, it's five hundred and ten dollars for the year and it's, it covers all three semesters. Um, with yoga, it's two days a week and it looks like it's five hundred and ten dollars, but it only starts through December. Is that?
Yes, the, the, each organization is setting their, their, their price. Um, I could give her, her that feedback, I thought the same thing, I thought it was a lot, but, um. I mean, I definitely will share their feedback and especially if people aren't signing up. But yes, it is only through December.
And Americas fours, how is that funded?
Not Americas.
C P S, it's called C P S four, and that is, uh, funded through C P S. It used to have.
No, it's two different things, two different, both confusing, yes.
Oh, it's, yeah.
Oh, I've got it, it's the same thing?
No.
Okay.
So, Americas fours is a private organization. C P S four is through C P S and they fund it themselves, so it's a free program for our students.
And this, they'll be playing against other schools, so it'll be, uh, a handful of games. I think the games are every Saturday, that schedule's supposed to come out, uh, Friday or, or I would expect it early next week.
Yo tengo una pregunta, um, has puesto en contacto con la organización que se llama Freela?
No he estado en contacto, pero estoy dispuesto, uh, si usted quiere pasarme alguna información, uh. Con todo, con todo gusto, yo, yo les, yo les hablo.
Yo no tengo una persona en contacto con ellos, solamente sé que ellos proveen, um. Programas de después de clase a otras escuelas aquí en Tulsa. Uh, y que las actividades son como variadas, entonces. Solamente comentaba porque creo que sería una buena idea ponerse en contacto con ellos. Si no, que se pueda hacer este semestre, tal vez se puede.
Mr. De Santiago, I put you in contact with them and you guys were supposed to connect and then they never responded to the email.
Hmm, okay.
Because we've heard about them over the summer.
Okay. I definitely will follow up.
So, we can notch them again, but yeah, we are trying to talk to them.
I can talk to somebody through a freight organization. And then I'll try and move that along.
Otra pregunta, uh, ¿cómo se decidió, um, los deportes que se iban a ofrecer y? Y a los, um, géneros que se le iban a ofrecer como, uh, mesakis que. Pa' hoy más para niños y. Yo no me acuerdo, no puedo decir nada.
Y fútbol para los niños, um. Hay, hay ciertas opciones, pero la, la pura verdad, si, si no hay coach, no hay, no puedo proporcionar un programa, ¿verdad? Entonces tengo dos, uh, personas en, en el staff, uh, que, que, que me van a poder ayudar con eso. Entonces escogí un, uno, un deporte para niños, uno para niña, para poder, poder tener algo inclusivo de los dos géneros, en ese caso. Uh, y ese fue el interés, a los niños quieren jugar el fútbol y, y, y las niñas querían jugar voleibol. Las niñas van a tener ju, oportunidad de equipo de, de fútbol en la primavera. Entonces cada temporada tiene, se ofrecen, uh, ciertos deportes. El que no estamos haciendo es flag football, pero también es, creo que es algo que tengo que comunita, comunicar a la comunidad. Si hay gente que está dispuesto a ser, uh, coach, uh, managers y apoyar a los niños, uh, eso también tal vez nos podía abrir los programas que podemos ofrecer.
En los años pasados, uh, se han hecho los, uh, equipos coed y por eso está, por eso es que es la razón por cual estoy preguntando. Cómo se determinó, porque muchos han empapado, uh, han, han hecho coed. Y han jugado contra otras escuelas que también tienen equipos de coed.
Sí, eh, no, no, no sé en qué liga o con qué grupo participaron en el pasado. Uh, pero las reglas de C P S score, eh, eh, la liga de deportes de C P S tienen ciertos equipos. Uh, sí hay algunos, um, programas que ofrecen coed, no lo tengo en frente de mí, pero flag football es uno, cheer es otro. Pero el voleibol, um, es de niño o niña, de, de acuerdo de cómo lo tienen, uh, organizado.
But we can try to push them up that, because there are other departments in C P S where they're like trying to go in that direction more, so I think.
Podría compartir dónde dice eso, uh, C P S, probably some of, um. The guidelines, dónde dice esa información. Porque yo no estoy, uh, de familiar with where that is, so I. A mí me gustaría ver dónde en, uh, C P S dice esa información.
Yes, or. Si hay un sitio de, de deportes, uh, donde hay toda esa información, lo más fácil que le recomiendo es hagan Google a C P S. Score exclamation point, pero ahí, ahí tienen la información de la, de, de la liga, de los deportes que ofrecen. Um, pero también, si tiene alguna pregunta que yo, usted quiere que yo pase a los que administran el deporte, yo con todo gusto lo hago. Um, pero sí, el C P S score exclamation point, eh, si usted busca eso, ahí le va a salir la página con toda esa información.
Gracias.
Alguna otra pregunta, comentario, after school? Uh, nada más quiero añadir que igual que, um, dijo Mr. De Otmar. Um, estamos viendo qué es lo que la ciudad puede proveer, um, si no, o también están. But you can change that, pero, um, el secret que por lo menos, uh, uscan. En los programas de finanzas, um, algún tipo de asistencia, siendo scholarships, sponsorships. Um, or even, uh, corporate sponsors or something to add if, or not worst case, but. Other options would be, uh, assistance with fundraising for, for that. Um, bajo otros asuntos tenemos budget. Budget transfers.
Yes, is that okay, FOIA master? We forgot to put budget transfers on here, just for this, can we squeeze it into other and then we'll make sure they're never dropped again?
Yeah, I did, we could have done it during the, before approving the.
We had a real.
I guess we should then do an amendment to the agenda right now.
Okay.
Just for the record.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's why I wanted to ask you, I was like, I know there's a way we can do this, yeah.
Motion to, um, amend the agenda to include budget transfers.
And fundraising.
And fundraising proposals.
I think so.
Uh, everybody.
All in favor?
All in favor.
I.
All in. Propose. Ready?
I have, like, something very quick on my new business, can this will be added or?
I think you're fine, yeah.
We did put that, we, we did add another, other new business.
Yeah.
So then it's, uh, go ahead and.
So, just go ahead and say.
Yes.
Okay, uh, so Gabriel's light, I have mentioned that before in the past and all of school has.
Mm-hmm.
This, um, this all has, uh, connected with them, they just connected with me, they are offering, uh, workshops. This school yet are focusing first on mental health and that act in kind. Um, and part of my presentations is to incorporate and improve parents, so. Doing the presentation first with the students and then looking at parents and being assumed afterwards to, uh, talk and share about the concepts that are being. Discussed with students, um, so I'm thinking about like September suicide awareness month and then October is bullying at the bullying month. Um, and so in that context of like continuing to be consistent when it comes to bullying and being kind. I think that just working with Gabriel's, continue to work with Gabriel's lights. So that they can, um, come into a presentation and be free presentation.
Um, and they sent me that same email, I sent it to Brittany because Miss Kane is the one that oversees those things. And my idea was that we go ahead with the mental health ones now, because that's the way they're structuring it. And we do our whole, um, anti bullying thing in like October, November anyway, so like we already do that. And then that could be our second semester, like, you know, just teach, go over it once a year, right? Then they forget and we can do a follow-up like with people.
Just to extra pressure, Gabriel's light is committed to building safer, kinder and, um, learning environments for people. Your goal is to create the second spirit because, uh, the reason behind. Children's and lost, uh, our child suicide, uh, because they were being bullied.
How does a payroll chart, will it be immediately after or like? Or be like, that don't take it down?
I believe it's not immediately, I'm very think it's the thing that we're recording inside.
Yeah, we'll be.
Do they do it for all grades or they do it for, for?
Because they do mention suicide in their presentation, so they want to just make sure it's.
Thank you.
Uh, so will you still present it?
Yep.
Off of the budget.
Any, any other new business? Okay, uh, the next in books and book them is, uh, budget transfers and fundraising proposals.
All right, um, first one is two thousand dollars from internal accounts to pay for uniting voices Chicago children's choir. Um, it used to be totally free, but they're still giving us a, a very, uh, deep discount of two thousand dollars. And this will be, uh, with middle school students this year, um, during our, uh, two fifteen day content.
Didn't have a Thursday, maybe.
We're still figuring that out, it looks like it'll be Thursdays.
How many students participate in that?
Um, usually around twenty, twenty-five.
And I don't think. In the past, they were during the school day.
And they're during the school day again, because not enough.
Higher enrollment.
Exactly, there weren't enough people last year, so I said they have, they were hoping it would be higher and then they could do more. Because the issue during the day is that we can't pull kids out of like math to go to choir, like then they're missing foundational math. Um, so obviously like our younger kids will sell music class, but then our older kids can, so have the opportunity. Yes, yeah, last year, how many did we have, like, six, yeah.
Yeah, it was like six, seven, five, correct.
Did someone motion it?
Um, I'll motion to vote on transferring these two thousand dollar funds.
One second.
Okay, all in favor?
I have.
All opposed? Okay, motion passed this.
All right, um, Ms. Guzman, uh, found us a really cool, um, C P R's, uh, presentation from Urban Gateways. For Hispanic Heritage Month is five hundred dollars, so we would be paying for this out of internal accounts.
I thought that's a bit, the figure was twelve thousand dollars.
Um, because I'm moving it out of, uh, internal accounts, I just want to let you guys know, I technically don't need your approval, but I'd like to tell you guys. Yeah. Only when I'm moving from like a C P S budget line or it's over a thousand. So, I don't technically need your, I don't technically need your vote, or is anyone opposed to this, it's only five hundred votes, we have plenty of money right now. Shockingly.
But, but this is not like BAC or POC budget, like this is not.
No, this is from our internal accounts. Yeah, and it'll be like a musical performance for kids celebrating Hispanic heritage.
Is it during the day?
Yes.
So, should we just move on because you don't need our vote, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, um, transfer funds, so we had a bunch of money that accidentally got put on equipment rental instead of like furniture. But then we actually don't end up needing furniture anyway. Um, but we're gonna move it to, uh, furniture because it does look like we're gonna need like some copies and things. So basically we're just, it's money we meant to put on the furniture line, but it ended up on.
Motion to approve the transfer of funds from equipment rental to property furniture.
Okay, second. Okay, all in favor? Okay, all opposed? Okay, discussion may be necessary, correct, motion passes.
Wait, so it's all transferred what?
To property furniture.
Property furniture.
And equipment rental.
And then we'd approved at our last meeting to move some money from the CPS budget lines to pay for Intimath because we couldn't get into internal accounts. But Reyna worked her magic and we got into internal accounts. So it's why we didn't end up moving money from those other budget lines, so it doesn't like mess us up, there's not a domino effect. And now when we go to buy computers, there's no money on that budget line, that money stayed. But now I have to ask you to move the $8,000 and $25, $8,025.97 from internal accounts, which is what we first meant to do to pay for it, to pay for our HMH math curriculum.
Motion to approve transfer of funds from internal accounts.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? All in. All opposed? Okay, motion passes.
That's what you guys did.
Oh.
Feature six minutes.
All right, our school fees...
Yes, you guys.
We said our school fees would be for like instructional resources explicitly mentioned, iXL, iReady, and then whatever other resources we needed. So we want to move $3,882.50 from our school fee budget line to a budget line to buy our iXL learning subscription. And so this is for students three to eight, from three to five, it's math and English, and then from six to eight, it's just math because they don't, they're not buying it for English issue.
I have a question. I have a question, so I know you have mentioned like any extra funds for materials was completely gone?
Yeah, from the CPS budget.
Okay, yeah, because I'm trying to figure out like, is there a possibility of moving funds from somewhere to get like our materials?
Internal accounts, it's coming up.
Okay, okay, perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
And so, so when you say three to eight, that's third grade?
Third grade, eighth grade.
And so, I just say iXL, so like the littles look at iXL?
Littles get iReady. And it's in alignment with the test data.
Oh, they're not doing iXL anymore?
Because teachers weren't really using both and PPLC decided that we wanted to split it up. You guys decide, you guys don't need this, PPLC.
I agree. I agree with iXL, so even if it's not used in the classroom.
You know, we were spending $15,000 just on online subscriptions, whereas we're trying to get away from that. We're also trying to get away from online, right? Our kids are on the tablets too much, so we actually are buying a lot more paper and pencil materials and reducing. But every grade level still has some, some online subscription to help with differentiation.
And we can explore that, like year by year.
We can change it, yeah, so for this year, each grade level has one thing that they're...
Yeah. And it could be lack of knowing how it works at that specific grade level to use it. Your use.
And there's still Freckle, there's still other free stuff that we're...
Thank you.
All right.
The motion to, uh, from student fee, $3,085,000 from student school fees to... For iXL. For tuition.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Of Spain? Motion passes.
And then next up is that iReady, so this is $6,102,000 and this is for our kindergarten, second grade students, math and... Yeah, that's why we're trying to reduce it.
Okay, motion to transfer funds from internal accounts.
But can you use that home? Or use cell?
Yeah, I'm on this.
Motion to, do it a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Of Spain? Motion passes.
All right, we're moving $1,000 from our internal accounts to, um, to a CPS supply line so that we can buy more school supplies because we're all out of money. We don't have anything specific we need right now, which is why we're only moving $1,000. Teachers also have their $300, so we're going to push them to spend it because last year, most of them did not spend it. So you can clear out where we're getting this $1,000 from.
I was going to ask, are you going to be like reminders that's...
That happened last year as well. So yes.
And then just from last year, it's been a little too late for the cutoff to see how we can pull it in centrally.
And I also thought, I'm not allowed to ask for it, teachers have to give it.
That's true, I, I...
So maybe Mike and other teachers can urge each other, but I'm not allowed to.
I had the principal get in trouble for that.
Yeah, I'm not a traitor. You used to be able to, but now, yeah, there was like a pressure situation.
Yeah, so that's, that's fine, I can... That could be brought up in PPLC, I mean, we have, there's like that, there's like a new, part of what was before was, it was kind of a confusing process that they like redid it for years. It's actually super easy now, so I think that's going to help more teachers be able to do it. But we can also bring that up in PPLC too, especially as like the year goes on. So Solvo, do you have like an exact record of how much has been used or which teachers have it or whatever?
I can go back, it's on the budget, it's on the...
I don't need it in a second, but for, for this upcoming school year, right? For, I'm saying for the current school year as we go on, right? If we have leftovers, it goes on, that could be a PPLC topic.
So you can see it at any time, when you click this little black presupuesto, it shows you how much is on the teacher line. It shows you all of the CPS budgets.
Okay, great, good.
Is that information you're allowed to share with the LSC if the LSC asks?
Yeah, it's a public technical.
All right, one gentleman. Uh, so motion to move funds?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Absentions? All opposed passes?
Next up is we're transferring $3,788,000 from internal accounts to CPS to purchase paper and pencil and TSS instructional materials.
Motion to transfer funds for MTSs instructional materials?
It's like a great fan, I don't know how many students.
It is, so it's just a bunch of different ones and it's according to the, it's all the best ones, um, according to the MTSs resources. So it's the Wade, it's the WIST, it's the WRS. It's like student workbooks.
Oh, I thought that was getting it.
Yeah, no, it's paper and pencil, it's used.
And then just to clarify part of that, I actually talked to Joanna because she was asking if I could do a training. So part of it is we're, when as kids test, then we'll be able to say, oh, we need to order this, right? So that's why we can't say exactly right now, like, oh, this is exactly what we'll need, right? But like, I've done vocabulary workshop, she's like, could you train, could you train teachers here? Sure, but obviously that's going to depend on testing if a lot of kids need that. So just clarification there, right? But we, it would be good to have these ones.
Yeah, do the math, and, you know, we're getting a bunch of stuff and then if we need a little bit more later, but we're getting like all the baseline stuff, but...
All right, I'll make a motion to transfer...
Uh, I...
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Nobody wants to. Motion transfer funds? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Absentions? Motion passes?
And then, yep, so next up, even though the CPS score program is free, we do have to buy the materials. So we're going to move $289,000 from internal accounts to a budget line to buy after-school program supplies, it's volleyball and basketball.
Motion to, any questions? Motion to transfer funds?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Absentions? Motion passes?
Another thing we have to pay for of all, so we're getting the free CPS scores and where parents are paying, but I'm paying out of internal accounts because we have the money for Ms. Domínez to stay after school, um, to do some of the after-school programs, as well as Ms. Salomarres to run our after-school programs. So depending on how many days we have total, it's looking like it'll be around $13,650 to cover all of that.
Is that for the year, for the next month?
It's for the year, but if we end up doing Monday through Thursday, I will be coming back to ask you for more, this is for three days a week through that.
I'll be over the offer, four days a week?
Yes. So that would be, but like right now, it doesn't really look like people are signing up for certain things.
Motion to transfer funds? All in favor? All opposed? Absentions? Motion passes?
And then less than at least transferring $3,908,000 from internal accounts to CPS to create a budget line to be able to pay for the gym uniform orders and then we make them again.
We already made them in the, or how does that work?
Yeah, it's in an internal account line, yeah.
Motion to transfer funds?
One second.
All in favor? All opposed? Absentions? Motion passes? And we have fundraiser?
Yeah, there's one that I'm requesting from the LSC and then I have four more, but that's for friend of Orosco, so I'll do that. Okay, remember that presentation. Okay, so Orosco gifted open house concessions for September 15th, a dollar per ticket. And the proposed distribution use of profit would be that Orosco gifted Slack.
So any fundraiser that is dug internally for the school does not need LSC approval, we not work with them.
So do we still have this?
Reyna keeps kind of telling me different things on that, just so we're clear, so she's being tools, other things. I think the issue is that technically the LSC doesn't need it, but if we get audited, we need it.
Yeah, so you can still fill out the form, but you don't need your approval, so it's a third party.
No, what I'm telling you is that I think Reyna needs it, so we get audited, we get in trouble. So maybe the L, like the LSC, well, the school council people are like, no, you don't need to do that, but CPS requires it on their end for audits. I think that's where the rub is coming in.
Sorry, and how's the different for any other fundraiser, I'll see how so please?
There is it, it is, so it was, it's being brought up because if we're selling from within, um, I guess during the training, it was that that we don't have to buy it from LSC because it's a certain...
Because all the proceeds stay with us, so if it's a third party, whether like a fair, a capacity, then we need a proceeds. So that needs approval for that. But if it's a school, it's a fundraiser for a school.
But either way, if it involves the CPS financial system, there's certain paper we have to have or we get in very big trouble, like Reyna can lose her job, which is why she's not planning on this.
Yeah, so she can fill out the form, but it doesn't need approval for that, so okay, so motion to approve?
Where, wait, just for the person that's approving, Michelle was fundraiser, is that the motion?
Yes.
Got it.
It's the Orosco gifted open concession. So a dollar a ticket, um, I'll just do $500 in there, maybe, maybe not, and then there's no expenses. Hoping to cover the $500.
So motion to approve, um, fundraiser for open house?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Of Spain? Motion passes?
So I want my clarifying question, I don't have the proposal here, but if Pre-K is designing their t-shirts and they want, and Reyna just say we have to do pre-orders and we can't do what we used to do when we buy them and then sell them, do I fill out proposal form?
I mean, do it and then if you don't need it, then you don't need it.
Okay, so then, I have one more, Orosco Academy Pre-K design t-shirt sale, but it's going to be a pre-order form. Like I don't have prices or anything like that, they just did it the last two or three years, um, they voted on the shirt, so there's this whole process, but those will be ready by November. So yeah.
Now?
Yes.
Okay.
To give us time to make it happen.
Motion to approve fundraiser for Pre-K t-shirts?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Of Spain? Uh, motion passes? Any other, um, budget transfers or fundraiser? Okay, move on to the next point of other updates. Do we have back or pack?
It's, uh, the 12th, is the question?
So yeah, so the, the next meeting, which is the organizational meeting, where, um, the, uh, to vote. The officers who be voted on, thank you, will be September 12th in the parent's room at 8:30 in the morning.
He's switching to the library.
Oh, in the library. To 8 o'clock?
And hopefully I'll have all the Title I information by then as well, because I'm supposed to present it then, but I don't have it.
Anything else for back or pack? PPLC?
Yes.
I just want to make everybody aware that it is 7 o'clock, so...
Got it, thank you. That'll be really quick, so we had our first meeting, las dos días de tempe, those persons present, they saw the San Diego pre bird and then Carillo and Palomares were remote, and we made just tentative roles even though I don't know who was there, so it's pretty, you know. So, um, timekeeper Torres, action Palomares, and facilitator myself. So we discussed the priorities for 2016 ideas de colaboración, puertas internas, and as well as our CIWP. We made routine norms, so okay, las soluciones y las tareas del automático francos, intentarse en el estudiante, inventar la riguidad de voz. We have some, we also made tentative dates, so we're going to try to do the first Tuesday of each month, all those dates are there, I'm going to make a infographic thing for the website. Then there's a discussion point for our next meeting, which we're going to, which we've been emailing back and forth. So there are some new members who want to join PPLC, there's a voting process, we actually discussed how many members could join as well. So this was after the meeting, but there has been discussion with that, so that will be at our next meeting as well. And that's it.
Thank you. Kevin's question? Well, we have to student rep.
Um, we haven't had any problems because this, we started, we still have, looking for issues or problems that are happening. I've started, I've started to work with a committee called SBC, which are all family problems. And SBC does start until next week, so we have issue of family problems.
Thank you.
Uh, Guita's coordinated?
Um, y solamente un anuncio que vamos a tener la casa abierta. Es una casa abierta para invitar a familias para conocer a nuestra escuela y aprender cómo hacer la aplicación para nuestra escuela. Tema es fiesta para la herencia de espada. Voy a estar trabajando en colaboración con Ms. Guzmán y hay otros miembros que quieren apoyar también, más bien, perdón, maestros. El 23 de septiembre, la ventanía de aplicaciones o de solicitudes se abre para las escuelas secundarias y primarias. El 29 de septiembre vamos a tener una sesión de información para las familias acerca de la certificación para nuestra escuela sobresaliente. Y el 30 de septiembre vamos a tener una estación invitando a gente para apoyar si necesitan ayuda con el sistema de cositiatra. para llenar la solicitud. Y luego, el día primero de octubre voy a tener dos sesiones de información para las familias de pre-teeners que ya quieren empezar a hacer preguntas y aprender cómo es el proceso para hacer a mi solicitud para tina.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Para el Orosco, rápidamente, bienvenidos otra vez. Quiénes somos, para especialmente para los padres nuevos que están acá, somos una organización independiente, manejada por voluntarios que trabaja con la escuela Orosco para cada fondos, para nuestro reñido Orosco. Tuvimos nuestra junta el veintitrés, veintiséis, perdón, de septiembre, de agosto, y este es el nuevo equipo de, 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 los directors. Hubo bastante participación, y vamos a trabajar todos juntos, solamente porque no están en el board directors, porque si no, tienen voz, y siempre están, todos, todos están dispuestos a trabajar. So, nos da un buen aliento para comenzar este año más fuertes que antes. Pusimos una meta ahí en esta junta de cinco mil dólares, y esto va a ser para hacer paseos para todos. Es una cosa menos que tenemos que pagar como padres, así que queremos recaudar por lo menos cinco mil dólares, que es el costo, que se estima para que cada clase, todos los clases, tengan por lo menos el autobús pagado sin tener que pedir a la escuela o a los padres. El logro y el chipman más grande ahorita es que tuvimos suficientes fondos para pagar parents' way. So, otra vez, nos habían dicho que no había dinero, que no había dinero, entonces teníamos unos fondos reservados de hace dos años, y como grupo decidimos usarlo de la mejor manera, y eso fue comprando parents' way. So, recordamos que tenemos el grupo del WhatsApp, poder donar, poder menos su sitio de web, y con eso tenemos algunos peticiones para encuadración de fondos. Empezamos con a vender charmos, sotachamos, este sería durante el mes de octubre, del tres de octubre a treinta y uno de octubre. Pensamos vender dos mil quinientos, las manzanas cuestan mil quinientos, este, y tenemos una ganancia de mil dólares.
Y le midimos en descargo.
Okay, entonces, hago una moción para aprobar este encuadración de fondos. Esto se va a vender en la escuela, so. So we're selling to the student body at the school, so we'll have order forms, we will distribute here, and we will be collecting money at the school.
So, sería, debería ser parte del budget?
No, it's a friends of Orosco. It's a friends of Orosco.
With LSC, we knew.
We go under a friends of Orosco, we're presenting right now, so everything that we present, we present, because it's about the school. Adding a fundraiser, it's friends of Orosco requesting to fundraise, of course.
But we fill out the same four forms, so that we can be in line with the CPG, so that's why it's a hundred percent.
Algunas veces para empezar, bueno, son los fondos que está todo eso.
Um, igual, so, es parte de los cinco dólares que queremos recopilar, so, son para separar field checks, para grados de pre-K, a octavo. So, hago una moción para aprobar.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Aye. Two abstentions? Motion passes? We tenemos también una petición para vender Orosco merchandise. Esto empezaría a mediados de agosto, y sería, esta petición sería hasta, like, antes of Thanksgiving. Sería para vender mercancías, tal como t-shirts, water bottles, merchandise of Orosco, que muchos padres han pedido, so, queremos ayudar con eso.
Va a haber, este, a markup?
It has.
Yeah, it's just on.
Si, y no sabemos ahorita exactamente qué vamos a vender, tenemos que, pero va a ser entre de un dólar a cincuenta dólares. There was nice hoodies, maybe fifty dollars, las water bottles, ten fifteen, depending on the size. Si alguien dice, hey, you should do this, y tú sabes que quieres, wow, trabajaremos para hacer eso, para ver lo que quieren los padres. Hago una moción para aprobar este recabos en los fondos.
Second.
Todos a favor? A encontrar? Abstained? Aye. Ah, vamos a pagar? And then, you want to?
Um, so, estamos buscando el apoyo también para tener la, el baile de otoño para la escuela de la escuela Orosco, para empezar, las admisiones, empezar a vender, si todo se acaba bien, este viernes hasta el veinticuatro de octubre. El veinticuatro de octubre sería la fecha para el baile. Los boletos serían diez dólares por cada estudiante, y esperando que la mayoría de los estudiantes participen, podemos ganar, se pueden ganar mil dólares, y no va a haber expenses, y se quedan con mil dólares, y esto se da para los eventos de octavo y actividades. Otra vez, eso es para admisiones. No incluye, este, la, concesiones? So, separamos admisiones y concesiones.
Hago una moción para aprobar este, so, de fondos?
Y la verdad creo que en este, lo hice al revés, esto deberían ser, de los mil dólares. Okay, yeah, son no expenses, but, uh, bueno, perdón. A un punto de distribución, pienso que diez dólares es mucho para pedir de entrance fee, porque todavía estamos pidiéndoles a las familias que compren comida, para las concesiones, eso es la tiga y anunciar el propósito de cobrar diez dólares para tratar de no pedir a las familias y estar preparados a un evento antes, so, lo que se gana de aquí va a apoyar el evento que sigue para octavo, entonces sería como.
Yeah, creo que son dos diferentes cosas, porque son tres cosas, se está pidiendo que, la puerta de la entrada, se está pidiendo que compren su propia comida, y se estaba pidiendo que ya no se va a pedir en futuro, donación, se va. Si entiendo que se va a eliminar la tercera parte, pero en mi opinión pienso que diez dólares todavía es mucho para un baile escolar, donde todavía estamos mandando nuestros hijos con veinte dólares adicionales para que compren sus, eh, eh. Eh, no, me imagino que es un tal, yo no soy parte de la Orosco, no más quiero dar.
Sí, eso es un buen punto, y también, y lo puedo, estando parte del equipo de octavo grado, hay mucho que nosotros también como maestros hemos contribuido, decoraciones, sé que los papás siempre están dando, siempre vamos a dar las gracias, pero también hemos visto que sacamos de nuestras bolsas también para poder apoyar, y no hay ninguna manera de donde lo podemos recuperar. No se puede poner en los de, like, el sitio, eh, hemos tenido de ser muy creativos, también nuestros, hemos comprado y luego regresado, so, hemos tratado de ser muy creativos para, y este es con el propósito de no pedir tanto a los padres, porque hemos estado pidiendo cada mes. So, son dos bailes al año, y luego cada mes se hace algo, algún padre se para los octavos para. Y al final estamos tratando de que cada estudiante, y estoy, a mí que me faltan por tres mil cada estudiante para poder llegar afuera del estado. So, hay bastante, y hay familias que, y yo sé que usted tiene esa experiencia, que, pues es que no es decir, ahora mucho, pero no todas las familias, no pueden.
Y esa fue decisión del escribir, y también, porque también nos tienen que, unos padres donan jugos y pizza, y esto, y el otro, y gastan cincuenta dólares, y otros padres que no compran nada, son para hacerlo un cuerpo más creativo, es, okay, si lucen unos cinco dólares más, van a comprarse cuatro dólares más, pero no tienen que gastar esos cincuenta dólares, y es más creativo. Se va a ser a la aire, no va a estar.
Y eso es la, también la razón de que lo estamos haciendo por medio de la Orosco, porque si lo hacemos por medio del concilio, tenemos que pasar ciertos vendors, y luego no, y la línea de tiempo no va de acuerdo, y a veces sí. Yo hablo de mi experiencia, estoy en la puerta esperando si van a llegar esos diez pizzas, o me llegan dos, y tenemos ochenta familias, y luego, um, y luego, tienen otras familias, okay, yo compro los diez pizzas, siempre es algo, algo, es bastante esto, eso. Yeah, so entonces estamos tratando de ver cómo podemos hacer algo de su principio para apoyarnos y vegetar, cosas así.
So, es para este, todavía se la van a pedir a las familias, las moción.
Para este, the very first dance, we didn't really get to, oh. We're trying to, like, if we can go to class, we'll, we're trying to do what we can, but again, we're a very small committee, and, and it's so, we can tell you that all of the events that we've had, there's only certain amount of people that get involved, like all hands on deck, and it's only fallen out, and then we don't wanna let our families down, like, the show must go on. So, again, speaking from personal fears, and not just of myself, but of your less than a handful, where we'll have to do, okay, well, we gotta, you know, we're missing ten pizzas, we got it. So, that's kind of, again.
Yeah, no, thanks for coming.
So, the same model is gonna be applied for, like, I'm just throwing, like, Loderia and I, then, like, the sisters around the world, I don't remember, I'm just.
Right.
So, the same model is going to be applied to all of those fundraisers?
We want to see how successful it is, and it's not even a hundred percent of our, so this time, middle school is including fifth grade, so it's fifth grade to eighth grade, so it's a bigger opportunity to model that, and then for other reasons, like for students to socialize with one another, just to get them accolated with other students, and not getting in the middle of two age groups. Can we table this for the next meeting? It's already almost twenty minutes past, so we're not even talking about the next meeting.
So, do we have a pool for this fundraiser?
And then, if I can just say that it's, just for, for sake of time, it's the concessions and the entrance, and the concessions are dollars. And again, we don't know what.
Motion to approve this fundraiser?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Abstained?
So, by the time, I'll just say same idea for pre-K through fourth grade pumpkin ball dance for admissions and concessions. Admissions being five dollars, and concessions being a dollar per ticket. And these funds are to support the pre-K events and activities, and it's specific to pre-K, because they're the ones leading and coordinating. So, those teams that are stepping up to lead and coordinate their own event, they can decide how they want to use those funds. And that's how we're encouraging more participation from staff and teachers.
I agree with that point.
Uh, actually, twenty seconds.
And the reason we decided for your package for this is because a parent must be present, so you're automatically to, for every chance.
Just trying to just get to the end, everything you phrase.
Motion to approve both of these fundraisers?
Yeah, I don't think.
And we lump them together unless it's somebody who opposes.
Yeah, no, it's a good.
So they kind of go one, one, we go each other. So, motion to approve the dance, admissions, and concessions?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes? Moving on to the next point, el próximo punto es comentarios públicos. Tenemos un comentario público?
Yeah, everybody parent here, so I just wanted to, so I'm a junior myself, my name's Oscar, I have a kindergarten here, just started, so it's my third week here. So I do want to give a couple of things of feedback. First of all, I thought the transition from this previous school to this new school would be a lot more difficult, and it's been fantastic, you guys, so excited to go home and tell us all about what he's learning, so, fantastic, it's been cool, so you guys are doing fantastic, thank you so much. Same thing, a drop off has been great, I know, I see Mr. in the morning, I see Meladio out there, Mr. Dominguez is out there. Having a two-year-old and a five-year-old is difficult, and so, in the morning, and they're dropping incredibly fast and efficient. We have a drop off in the kid here, take out the other, wants to daycare, and then, and work in less than ten minutes, so, fantastic, so, thank you guys so much, it's been really fantastic to do it so quickly. The other thing is, I know, I know I've talked to some of the LSC members, and it's still all about our concerns about the after-school program. I know you guys are working on it, we honestly thought it would take a little longer to get something running, so I know it starts next week. So, I, I think I, and our, when we're concerned was just sort of figuring out what exactly was gonna be offered before you sign up for something. So I think that's maybe what you're seeing, is that some other, from talking to other parents, are sort of doing next, so, because it seems like there's piecemealing going on, and so, we don't want the five hundred dollar one, and you sign up for it, but then something else pops up that is more days a week, and then you just spend five dollars, so that's sort of what our apprehension was, for signing up for it. But now we sort of see that, that thing is gonna be in progress, so we'll sign up for the venue or the other thing, because our preference is for us to be here. We sign up for our kids in the meantime as a stopgap, but they've also told us that they will not come pick up the kids on the days, or if it's cold, and all that, and so that's, you know, we have a five-year-old, so we don't want him walking myself over there, so that's sort of our main concern, so we really appreciate that you're working on getting something into school, because even if it means paying for it, like, we're willing to do it if it means that he's safe somewhere, and we know exactly where to go. So, I appreciate everybody's tough work, and Mr. Dominguez, or Mr. Santiago was talking about, you know, T-Bob for the little ones, so, we appreciate all the effort that's going in. And then my final thing, that was such on, is in anticipation of coming here tonight, I wanted to sort of catch up on the previous LSC meetings, but the one from August is not available, so I couldn't watch it or see anything, or access all minutes, or anything like that. And so, I don't know if it's something I can work on, where those get uploaded, or if it can't happen before this meeting, because I know you guys have sort of switched, have the meetings be alternating in the evenings and in the mornings, so that parents and such, I worked during the day, so I probably won't be able to come during the, during the day time ones, but, you know, if it's impossible for me to catch up on them, and then the time we upload it, or at least the minutes are up, then I can sort of try to keep track, because then, like, today, I started coming, like, had no idea what the old business was, because there's no minutes or anything available to us, so we can just get those, running, that'd be great.
One clarifying point about the minutes, we're always a month behind, just because we have to prove it.
Yeah.
From, yeah, but.
So that's sort of like, as a parent, and that's sort of like, an issue, right, like, that we are always a month behind, so if you miss something, and there's no dissemination of the information you guys discussed about, or what's going on, and then sort of like, you're sort of blind going into a month, and if you miss a month or so, then you're.
So, the video will be, yeah, the video will be put up right away, and it usually helps.
Okay, so then, okay, okay, that's fine, so then we can watch on our, and speed it up on our own terms, so, so that's just like, but otherwise, that was.
Oh, thank you, we appreciate you being here.
My name is Oscar, and nice to meet you all, so.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.